Rather than let them listen to our boring discussions.
Of course.
Okay, sure.
Okay, start.
It's going.
It's going, all right. Good evening, everybody. This is the Enfield planning board. And we are meeting on July tenth at the Enfield Public Works Facility and on Microsoft Teams. Before, I'm calling the meeting to order. It is six thirty-two. And for those of you who haven't heard, the Weather Service has issued a tornado watch for Enfield and surrounding towns. I have no idea what, you know, what kind of warning we'll get other than on our phones.
According to Alexa, they went from a warning, I mean, a watch to a warning now.
Oh.
Just as we walked out the door, she gave us a little, I think.
Okay. If anything else happens, would you please feel free to?
Alexa.
To let us know.
Sure.
And I don't know if things get hairy, I'm going into one of the bays and hiding under a big truck. What?
How much room is there under?
There's a lot of trucks. I think we could all fit.
Did they say till what time?
Until, well, last I heard was midnight. Is that still correct?
Today's the eleventh. What's today's day?
Today's the eleventh.
Okay.
No, today's the tenth. Okay. Wonderful. All right, so attendance, members present.
Linda Jones.
I'm David Frat.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
Mark Carr, alternate.
Bill Griffin, alternate.
On teams, we have Dan Kiley. And our staff people.
Rob Toon.
Whitney Banker.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five. Bill and Whitney will be elevated to full membership if we have to take any votes.
We can't replace select board, though, right?
Cannot.
So would it only be?
Oh, it would only be one, you're correct. I'm hoping John shows up. In that case, Bill, would you be our elevated alternate? Get you into the, get you into things. Okay, so our first on the agenda, although it's number seven, will be a discussion with the Heritage Commission. And they have requested a meeting with us to discuss, to inform us what they do and to try to figure out how we are going to work together on land use issues that fall within both of our wheelhouses.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since I'm a member of the Heritage Commission, I'd like to join them.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything voted on.
I don't think, I don't think there's, I don't think there will be either. Who is going to be the spokesperson? That'll look.
I have a, Rob assured me that my slide show.
Okay.
So.
And there was handouts, did everybody get a copy of their handouts?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Um, so this is sort of what we're gonna do. We're gonna give you a little bit of a background. We're gonna talk about the difference between what the National Register of Historic Places, historic districts, there seems to be a little bit of confusion about that, just to explain what those are. Talk a little bit about the various, the goals that we have, the goals that, you know, had been expressed in the master plan and how we can, actually, a lot of them we share and how we can then maybe give you some suggestions to work on them. So this, I hope, is sort of a bare bones presentation, nothing to decide now. It's to sort of start being able to think about ways that we can work together. And it occurred to me, because as you all know, I'm on zoning board and we've, you know, got, we had this big layer re-farmed decision, there's the Shed Street thing coming up. There are a lot of big projects that are a challenge for the town to absorb, a challenge for the character of the town. And so this seems like a good time to really start to examine what our values are and how we're going to deal with this. Also, because as I was looking at the master plan, it, two things, one thing struck me is that in the master plan, there seemed to be two sort of big thrusts. One is a request or, you know, the community's desire to have more services, to have, you know, things that are a little bit more lively, maybe shops, maybe restaurants and things. People are, you know, obviously, there's a great need across the state and here to have housing. And then at the same time, there's a desire to preserve Enfield's rural character. So these are two things that are not always easy to reconcile. And so it seems to me, as they say, this is a good moment for us to start coping with that and finding a way, finding ways forward that we could, you know, that we could manage that. So I hope, as I say, we're gonna go through this fairly quickly so that we can answer questions later on. It might be more useful. The Heritage Commission's legal basis, and you've got it there, I'm not gonna bother. Can you have the next slide? I'm not gonna bother reading it to you, but, and you have the text there. This was something that was started in nineteen sixty-three. The, the New Hampshire creates the Heritage Commissions. If any of you know a little bit about heritage preservation in the U.S., that was kind of a watershed moment, so big things happened. They destroyed Penn Station in New York and people started to think, wait a minute, you know, what are, what are we throwing away? What do we need to keep? So as I say, that's in your handout. I won't bother reading it to you because you can all read yourselves. And I think we should go on to the next. And Meredith is gonna talk a little bit about the Heritage Commission because she started it. And she knows all about why it came about and we'll talk about, we'll talk about that.
Okay, well, yeah, I feel as old as Methuselah, having been with this for a very long time. I'd like to start by reading the mission statement of the Heritage.
Which is also a flat man.
Which is still very relevant. The Heritage, Enfield Heritage Commission will properly recognize, protect and promote the historic and aesthetic resources that are significant to our community, be they natural, built or cultural. The Commission will work cooperatively with other educational and civic organizations in fulfilling its mission. And I reread this on a regular basis because it really describes what we're all about. So for a brief history lesson, over twenty years ago, as Eva wrestled with the direction they might take to promote the mission of renovating and improving Main Street, which was pretty awful at the time, a request was made by the then-town manager, he was actually a part-time town manager, Steve Rivers. It was decided that Main Street program could help tremendously in that effort. That's the New Hampshire Main Street, which is a program that's kind of faded into oblivion ever since Kathy LaPlante left to go for a bit, much bigger job in Washington with the National Main Street Program. In the, in reading the fine print of the application process for the Main Street program, Eva noted that the towns and municipalities that had heritage commissions had a better chance of being accepted into the program. At the eleventh hour, it was January, my husband and I went around the neighborhood and we, first we wrote a warrant article and then got the necessary signatures and it got on the town warrant that year. It passed overwhelmingly in town meeting. I think in part because it was maybe warrant article number eighteen and everybody wanted to get out of there. I have also put, I've made a handout for you. I won't go into all of this, but I thought, I, I was reviewing my notes and in two thousand and six, I attended a conference put on by the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance. It was called preserving community character. And it's still very relevant today, preserving community character. And there was a section on how heritage commissions and master plans could work together. And that's in the handout, I won't go into it all there. Some of the accomplishments of the.
Go to the next slide.
Oh, that's eighteen High Street, funny story about that. It was a wreck. And the town, April Whitaker was town manager at the time. It was reputed to be one of Enfield's original schoolhouses, but it was in derelict condition. The town had taken for taxes and they got an estimate of six thousand dollars to tear it down. And I went to the town manager and said, look, instead of spending six thousand dollars to tear it down, put it up for bid and let people, the town's people bid on it. Don Roberts bid on it and bid eleven thousand, eleven hundred and eleven dollars and eleven cents. He said eleven was his lucky number. He won the bid and proceeded to attempt to renovate it. Well, he got into the project and realized it was about to fall into the river and his estimate to restore it wasn't going to work. But he took the place apart and reused as many of the parts as possible and created a very nice living, nice house. Built from nothing, really. So the town was the winner right off the bat because they saved six thousand dollars. They got eleven thousand, eleven hundred and eleven dollars and eleven cents in the sales money and provided another dwelling space for townspeople. Some of the things that the Heritage Commission has accomplished and, and that is, this is not inclusive, but I think a lot of you'd be interested in the fact that Lakeside Park evolved from the Heritage Commission. That was under the natural, natural resources part of our mission statement. We've created a walking tour of Main Street. I don't know what has become of those little brochures, but they used to be available at Town Hall. It pointed out the various historic sites. We partnered with Eva to create the signs on, historic signs on Main Street. We worked on the two of Hampshire DOT signs, which are really important, those historic markers of the height of the road. There are two hundred and some odd of them and there are people that drive all over the state just to read those markers. I didn't believe this until the day we were about to dedicate the one on Main Street and some guy pulled in and we had the thing covered with a, with a bunting, ready to, you know, unveil it. He said, well, where's the marker? I came to see it. It had already been put on the website. And he, he chases down every new historic marker. So those things do contribute to historic tourism as well. We collaborated with Eva on the Greeley House. That's the little red house, which is one of the oldest houses in Enfield.
I think that's the, yeah, actually, go to the next, because that shows that.
Yeah, there's the sign. Oh, and we went round and round and round of the state on the wording for that. It has to be very specific. We've received three moose plate grants through our efforts.
That's Greeley House.
The Greeley House was an absolute blank. Again, it was scheduled as a tear down. It was in terrible condition. Eva bought it, I think it was forty thousand dollars of foreclosure to save it. We had Jim Garvin, this state architectural historian, come in and he helped us tremendously. And Paul Mersky also helped tremendously. He created the first working drawings for the building. Always, Paul always worked pro bono, anything he did for the town. Lakeside Park, the planning he did there was, we estimate forty or fifty thousand dollars worth of work that he did all pro bono. But now Greeley House is really a jewel of Main Street, I would say, or one of the nicer places. Perhaps one of our biggest accomplishments was the National Register District, April of two thousand.
Go back, yeah, to the, that's would be slide.
Yeah. It's one of the.
Oh, okay, why, yeah, why?
One of the largest national registered districts in the state of New Hampshire. Two hundred ninety-three contributing properties, meaning they are all eligible for the National Historic Register. And I don't think nearly enough has been said about this and we need to toot our horn a little more. These have huge pluses for certainly economic development through historic tourism.
Because we have, anyway, I have the whole.
Okay, so I will shut up and let you.
You're going to go talk about this, talk about that.
You don't want to get me wound up.
Well, no, because that, that was what, what our next, our next thing was. So we created, or whatever, the Heritage Commission set up the Enfield Village Historic District. And this is where it's gonna get a little bit confusing because there's the Enfield Village Historic District and then there's the National Register of Historic Places and they're sort of different.
No, no.
Even though they overlap in other ways.
No, they're not. It's National Historic Registered District.
Right, but it's also now our, our historic district for the purposes of the other, of the New Hampshire, the. All right. I don't, well. There's a little bit of confusion. Anyway, so the Nash, this is the Enfield Village Historic District, is that correct? Okay.
A National Registered Historic District. That's very different than the state historic.
Because that's what I'm saying.
Okay, it's not a state historic district.
That's what I'm saying, they're two different things, but they're the same places. Are they not?
I don't think we ever applied for state historic this year.
I thought this was the, the Enfield Village Historic District. Is that not a state like the, the Enfield Center? Is that not?
No.
It isn't?
Yeah.
I thought we had, sorry, anyway. Well, let's go back. So the National Register of Historic Places, these are the advantages of, of having, whatever, of, of these. That, of course, the built community pride, the building and safety codes make it easier to do certain things in this historic district. And there are tax advantages of that as well, which we can also talk a bit, a little bit later. The next slide are, well, let's go to that. That is slide number seven. And that is, just to make some things clear, because people don't quite understand that it, these are things it does not do. It doesn't mean if your house is in this or it's a, a national register that you can't paint your shutter's pink if you want to paint your shutter's pink. I think that's all quite, quite clear, there may be questions about that. I think that's all quite clear. So then there is the historic district, which is the zoning overlay.
That's in Enfield Center.
Okay, I thought you had one down. I thought that was everyone.
No, just Enfield Center.
I was saying first, like, dear, I'm very sorry about that. Anyway, but, so I thought that this had been done into that as well, as a zoning thing. All right, so the historic district, which is the state designation, which we have asked for and you, we've got, that was voted for on the most recent town meeting is, or sorry, last year, is in Enfield Center. Now, what that historic district does, this is a state thing, this is completely different. I think that you should make that clear. That is done all at a local level. Any regulations or guidelines or things that happen there, things that we decide locally that we want, want to do there. We can say, you know, every house there has to be painted white, if that's what we want to say. Or we can not do anything at all, but that's done by us. That's not something that somebody comes in from outside and, and says that you have to do. Now, the, the, what? Somebody has a question. The, can we go to that? That's number eight. So the event, the advantages, no, it's the previous, yeah. So the advantages of this are, of the historic districts are pretty obvious. They tend to attract, and some of this is in the handouts that I gave you, they're better numbers for that. I didn't say. They attract developments, smaller businesses prefer to be in historic districts or places where there are historic buildings because they're more adapted to smaller businesses. There are places where there's foot traffic. Younger residents, I think, something like forty percent of millennials or something prefer to live in historic districts. It raises the property values of the area because it does, you know, all these other things happen. Just a sort of random fact, highly rated restaurants and things all tend to be in historic districts. So these are things that are quite important and, and attractive for a town. And so maybe we can go into the next slide, which is, so this is the master plan. And this is where I say, some of our, our goals and the things that we can do overlap. You know, we want to encourage business while, you know, the, the housing stock and the building stock that we have is suitable for smaller businesses. One of these too, I think, that we talk about constantly, affordable housing and sustainable housing. What's the most affordable housing? One that's already built. What's the most sustainable housing? A building that's already built. So again, these are things where we can really work together to, to make those happen for you. And then I think, let's have Linda talk a little bit more specifically about ways that we can collaborate. Can we go to the next slide?
So the, the Heritage Commission is a land use board. And there are several ways. For example, for the planning board here, the Heritage Commission can review renovations in a historic district for, for example, like Lebanon does.
Sorry, can I just, on your handout, there's also the case law from the New Hampshire state about how Heritage Commissions collaborate, may collaborate with planning boards. Sorry.
So the Heritage Commission and the Historic District Commission, which are sort of operating as one right now, not separately. They can provide input when the planning board or the selectmen have a project impacting a historic district or building. The zoning board, we, if, if it's in a, touches on issues in a historic district, we can give testimony to either how it does or does not, whatever's asked for, enhance the the project they're asking for a variance for. Or does it retain the spirit of the ordinance? For the selectmen, we can provide input when to, they need to develop a work program for renovation or disposing of a civic structure, like tearing down an old house. And also, one that came up just yesterday to me, to my mind, is getting preservation grants. I went over to the Enfield Center Townhouse to check if it's ready to be opened for old home days and found that they had to have workmen over there putting the roof, we call them plates, the big pieces of metal, back on and, and putting them, reattaching them. Mr. Muzzy had called the town to say there were four sheets that were coming up and they found a number of those. And I saw water on the floor inside, so either the roof or a window was leaking. And so that is just the kind of thing that the Heritage Commission has gotten grants for. And I don't think, I don't think it would occur to the selectmen, first of all, to think, to ask us if there were grants available. And for property owners, we can be a resource to them. We can provide information and education about preservation programs. One is the Historic Barn Program. Many barns in Enfield qualify for assistance with that. And, and there is a tax incentive for ten years that goes with that. Also, we could host workshops on historic renovations. And we do have one coming up in the fall. Swear to God.
Maybe.
For, for window glazing and restoration, which any of us who live in old houses know that that's just darn useful. And there would be no, I mean, there's no cost to get the resources here. So most towns that I read up on, on their, how they handle their heritage commissions on the checklist, when someone brings in a project, there's, like, there's a box for wetlands and conservation commission. There's also a box for heritage. So so we're just thinking about the fact, is there an issue here that Heritage Commission could help with? Thank you.
Yeah, so I, let's just go a little bit, she's, so I have, you know, the professional resources, the, the Preservation Alliance gives an incredible thing in Lebanon every year and they talk, you know, teach you how, how to look at infill, how to, you know, how to evaluate putting buildings in and the considerations to make. And I think, you know, that would be useful, as I say, we've got these big projects coming up. If we had on the planning board, people who had really looked at these things and studied these tools would make it easier to talk to the developers and, and know what the issues are and what they, they could handle. I'll talk to these a little bit more. One of the things that, about the guidelines, that would be helpful for, for, to work together to set up is developers like to have those because they know then what a town is expecting. You know, we had, I think, an issue here with the, with the dollar store and the fenestration. And we were, as I understand, I didn't participate, we were told one thing was going to happen, it didn't. But if we had a very specific guidelines that said, these, this is what fenestration means here, then when you enter those discussions, you can, you have a basis to start talking on. And you can also call people out when they don't, when they don't come up with it. Because you could say, listen, you know, this is what you're supposed to do.
Ben, is that also known as form-based zoning? Is that the same thing?
I don't.
No, different?
Different.
Okay.
No, no. So the guidelines, again, you know, we, we can decide those. We can decide that maybe they only apply to, you know, new buildings or whatever. These are things that we, we can do. As I say, we've got these big projects coming up. It might be very helpful to have those upfront when somebody wants to build here. And we know, we've already decided what they, what the parameters are. The other thing that I think is really important and, and Meredith mentioned is the question of the character of the town. That's something very vague. It says in the, you know, in the, in the master plan, the rural character of the town. And we need to have a little bit more clear what that means or what our town character is. Again, that's something that the New Hampshire cultural, heritage. Again, that's something that the New Hampshire Cultural Heritage, Hampshire Preservation Alliance can help us think that through and just make our parameters and make a concrete thing that we can then have that's standard, and we all know what it is. Because I think this is a little bit of a problem. Everybody sort of has their own idea of what Enfield is. Is it the Shakers? Is it the Mill? Or, you know, I think if we talk about that and, and are proactive about it, we can do, do a much better job. You can also make guidelines for things like where, how buildings have to line up on the sidewalk or things that make it possible to harmonize and bring in new buildings without being fakey historic, but also still respecting the scale and the, the way that our town is like, is out. So this is where I say, this is, we could start talking, this obviously, we're not going to decide tonight. But this is, these are the sorts of issues that we can start helping you talk about. And finally, here on this, the last slide, Rob, is the, are these various, the one after this, tax incentives. One is this, the Federal Historic Preservation, which is an investment tax credit. As you see, this is for commercial and/or rental residential space. So, you know, this is again, this is something, if somebody wants to do something in town and wants to do something about housing in Enfield, this is a really good reason to go with an existing structure and, and with something that is in the historic district. So that is really important as we talk about these things. Again, another thing is, this is that Linda mentioned, the barn. Again, these are things that can, can help people. Rob knows a lot about the barn. Use them to, to do, again, create housing to, to respond to some of the needs that we have in town. Anyway, that's it for us for tonight, for, for the formal part of the presentation. If you guys have other questions, we're here to, here to answer them.
Well, thank you. That was
Sorry about that.
That was a very informative presentation, and sitting here listening to it, I kind of wish that we had heard a lot of this a couple of years ago. So it's very well done. Open it up to board members for any questions.
How do we move forward? I mean, how do we, how do we know when to get the heritage folks involved when we are having hearings for, for different development projects?
I, I, I will give you my answer, and then perhaps Madeline can give me hers. My answer is that we are very fortunate in that we have one of our members, Linda, who also sits on the Heritage Commission. And I would expect that as long as that relationship continues, that Linda will be the major conduit between the two, between the board and the commission. At some point in the future, Linda may elect to not be on one or the other or both boards, which is her prerogative. And then in that case, I think it would be a good idea for the Heritage Commission to look at our agendas. And I, I think probably on larger issues, they're not issues that are going to be discussed and decided in a single session. So there would be time for them to approach us, get their facts, and come up with their position on a particular subject, just as the Conservation Commission does. They are, I guess, an equal, equal level board. And if I'm not mistaken, their role when it comes to interfacing with us is strictly advisory. Is that correct? Yes. So that's my answer. Madeline, or Meredith, what is yours?
Most towns have a representative on the planning board from the, from, if they have a heritage commission, from the heritage commission. And that's how Linda, well, probably to the planning board.
Okay. We will, you know, I, as I said, I think we're fortunate to have that relationship now, and we can certainly endeavor to maintain that as both boards go forward. Shirley?
I was just saying, thinking going forward, even though the Conservation Commission does, is able to be more internal agenda with the planning board out, it would be nice to have Conservation and the planning board.
We only have seven seats.
Moving forward, maybe when there's an opportunity.
Or as you choose people or people apply, that could be a priority for
Yeah.
Or as you select people, it's an extra, you know, if there's one more thing that
What? Is there a select board that has seven?
Heritage?
Uh, yeah, Alaskan House.
Is the, is the Heritage and the Conservation, are they full, full membered? Is, are there any open slots on either one of those?
There, the Conservation's full right now.
It's full, okay.
I think Heritage does have, I know, because one of our members had to resign for medical reasons.
Is Heritage elected or appointed?
Appointed. And we usually ask, I mean, I'm, I'm from its beginning, so I, I don't need to take over, but we usually ask for some kind of connective, connecting factor, you know, with what are your interests? In the case of the person that had to resign, she's an architectural historian. Also, she's a PhD. And those things are important. When you apply for grants, they frequently want to know what the background of your members happens to be. So you just don't take anybody off the street and say, how'd you like to be on the Heritage Commission? Or Conservation, for that matter.
And you, you have a Conservation Commission member on the Heritage?
Yes.
Right.
Kurt?
Yeah, I mean, either, any other town party or entity can always have standing before the planning board, like in a butter, have standing. So you, I mean, just by courtesy anyways.
Okay.
At a venue.
By state law.
Probably.
Yeah, it's in RSA, it's in RSA.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not familiar with specifics on the RSA, but just as a venue of courtesy thing, it would, should be heard as a, like an, any a butter would be legally heard. So, you know, just follow the agendas.
How would that play out? Let's say we had a, a project and application in front of us. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance subdivision regulations that deal with issues like aesthetics and about a building site, pits in the neighborhood, things like that. I think you'd want to weigh in on. As we're set up now, it would seem that, well, yes, you could make a pitch for the developer to voluntarily perhaps pay attention to what they're saying. I don't, I don't, is there a mechanism by, I don't think there's a mechanism in existing ordinances, but
Why not? I mean, if the, if the, the historic district is a zoning overlay, like
There's no
If, if
It's, it's listed through the, I didn't print off the website I got this from, but I think it was the National Historic District that lists everything in the country. It just did the entry section. And everywhere in Enfield it says restricted address, falls.
We have, the, the National Registered Application lists one hundred and ninety-three properties that are eligible. And it lists the addresses that may
What I'm saying is, currently, there is no, an owner of that property can do whatever they wish. So, so there's no, so we have no say if they wish to tear that building down.
But this is
That's right.
That's correct, but
That's what I'm saying.
But it's, my understanding is, if it's a historic district that has, we have requested a zoning overlay as we did in Enfield Center, then for that overlay, we can make guidelines and restrictions on what happens in there. That's something that has to be done at the town level, as we did with Enfield Center.
Present moment.
Right now.
Right, at the present time, there is no
Right, except in Enfield Center.
Except for, for three buildings in Enfield.
Put any guidelines on.
Right, and that's, that is my understanding as well.
Right.
So are you, are you thinking to ask the planning board to create a zoning overlay, historic overlay district for this building?
I mean, we haven't, I mean, it, it is theoretically possible, and that was, as they say, that was a warrant article that was voted on at, at town meeting, but we came
Correct, a couple of years ago.
For that. So it, it's entirely theoretically possible. It's not something that we're here saying, hey, guys, let's do it. But that would answer, if we did do it, then it would change, as you say, our relationship with, you know, it would be like any other zoning regulations that, that somebody, you know, doing would have to, have to deal with.
However, if, let's use as an example, someone wants to do something, their, their property owner, one of these hundred and ninety-three contributing properties. Say wanted to do something really outrageous to the building. I think we could serve in an educational capacity to educate that property of the value of keeping the property reflecting its historic nature. We can't tell them what to do, but we can act as an educational field.
Right. And, you know, I don't know what sort of outrageous thing might be done, but unless it involves a site plan review or an expansion, we have nothing to do with it at all.
Right.
So, you know, serving
Or tearing it down, for instance. They're going to tear it down and put a parking lot there. That was suggested for breathing out.
Mm-hmm, and that's something that we could not have any regulatory input.
Yeah, but the Heritage Commission
If you could.
Certainly
Advisory.
Called in Jim Garvin, who is the state's architectural historian. And he told us a lot of interesting things about the house. It was the house of the Shaker, the Shaker Miller. He wasn't a Shaker, but he operated the Shaker frame though. It's there. It was a plank house, and he got really excited, we didn't know what a plank house was. Well, he did, and he got very excited about it, and we became more determined than ever that the place should be saved and renovated. And we did, well, we, Eva and
Yeah.
elected.
I think one of the important things is the, the education for people, you know, we could also work together. We talked about in the past, should we have awards for the town, for people who, you know, if somebody does something particularly nice, they get the, you know, the Heritage Commission prize or whatever. That if people are educated and aware of it, and again, this is something you can help with, then maybe they would come to us, or you, you hear that somebody was going to tear it down, or want, you know, realize if they knew better that, gee, if they fixed it up, you know, they'd get, they'd get some tax advantages. So it might be worthwhile for us to work together on some sort of educational outreach to make people aware of what, what can be done and, or what they might want to, want to think about, you know. Maybe they have an old house. Maybe it'd be nice to talk to us and find out, as he says, it has some architectural feature that is interesting to somebody. Maybe a real estate agent would like to know that.
So what, what I'm, what I'm hearing and what I'd like to suggest as a first step is that when people approach the town, when they come to Rob with a project, or when they come to, is it Vinnie? Is that our new, our new building guy? When they come to Vinnie for a building permit, that there be a checkbox for historical relevance.
It's on, it's on, you know, the, on the map that, that, that's there, that's, and there's a list of buildings. That would be very easy to have that on the checkbox. And somebody could say, gee, you know, this is on the National Registered Historic Places.
Did you know it?
Yeah, did you know?
Yeah, and then, and then there, there would need to be some communication from Rob or Vinnie that such an application exists. And there would just be an internal memo sent to you folks saying that there's this particular house or a structure at this address, and the owner is contemplating doing A, B, C, and D. You guys take it from here.
Yeah, we could talk to them, and it's nothing binding, but as they say, people
Yeah, it's education.
About that. And again, the resources that are available, for instance, you know, what to do about windows? Are aluminum windows or whatever really better? Or what, what, you know, they're, they're very concrete solutions to handling buildings like that, that, that we can put people in touch with that can make a difference in how you restore it or make it more efficient or any of those.
And as a suggestion or a fact, we have an absolute treasure in our community, in Andrew Bushing, who is the field officer for the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance. And Andrew has done all sorts of wonderful things for us. He also founded, and he's the president of Mascoma Reservation.
I'm Mascoma Valley Preservation, and I am a board member.
Jim, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I just want to understand terminology. So, so this, this area here, it's marked on the map, identifies the buildings that if the owner wanted to apply for
Twenty percent tax
No, no, no. Apply for designation as a national historic building, he could do so, right?
Yes. Correct.
But just because he's un eligible to apply.
Correct.
None of these buildings are actually qualified, or there may be at one or two. I don't know. How about you with that?
Yeah, I'm hard, I'm hard, I'm hard, I'm hard, it's on the register, but we're, we've been going through this with Alice Kennedy. She has a house in the district that is one of the hundred and ninety-three.
So once they get on the, that register, they're, they're part of that. They voluntarily then accept a lot of restrictions.
No, no.
No restrictions.
There aren't restrictions. Look at the page of what it does not.
Yeah, yeah.
There aren't any. You can tear it down.
It just says you are on the National Registered Historic Places.
That's it.
Yeah.
Autourity.
Now, as I said, if we decided that that area, what, where, a area and put the zoning overlay and said, you know, you can only paint your house white, yes, then. But again, as I say, that's something local. That's what we decide. It's not something that's imposed on us from, from outside. So as I say, in the Enfield Center, we haven't put any restrictions on. We, that could obviously change. So that's a tool, if we did want to, going back to your earlier question, that that would, that would be the advantage.
We'll take that one little step further. If you're on, if your building is registered as National Registered Historic Places.
If the National Historic District.
If it's within the district and it is contributing, it has a L C F.
Right, but
Some don't contribute. George's, for instance, is not a contributing structure.
Okay. But if I never, as a building owner, if I never apply to be on the list of National Historic buildings, building, building, singular building, I probably can't qualify for some other grants, things you're
If you live in the house, you can. If it's rental or business, you can apply for that twenty percent.
So if I get my house on that pressure, and then I do crazy things, I, I, I paint psychedelic colors, I take off all, I take off all the trim, I put aluminum windows in.
Yeah.
I'm probably going to lose I'm probably gonna lose my eligibility to be on the list of historic sites.
Uh, that is, that is quite, that that's possible, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to understand.
An example of that is the Enfield Center Townhouse, which the town ought to be. Really ashamed that it wasn't included in the buildings they studied. They studied, was it eleven buildings, so eleven places, Shred Street was one of them. Here we have an extremely historic building, the Enfield Center Townhouse, was Enfield's first town hall, and there it sits. They didn't even include it in the survey that they did.
Of civic buildings that they studied.
All this work, uh, it is listed on the National Historic Register. And we should ask them about moving the building, and they, New Hampshire Historic Resources, which is a state agency. As opposed to Preservation Alliance, um, told us that it would probably lose its. It's it's registered status unless we could prove that flooding. That that it was being continually flooded, and it was a necessary. So I think that's a good example of, yes, if you compromise the building. On such a way, you would lose your registered status.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments from the board? Um, I'm gonna ask members of the public if they have any questions or comments relative to this discussion.
I'm just curious, I don't think I followed entirely, if I had a house that was listed. On that map, what benefit would the community register for, to make sure that my house is registered for their business? Other than my own personal interest?
Honorific, yeah.
No, okay. Is is there a date, like an age requirement?
No, there are lots of factors.
But that said, Sharon, if going back to the tax thing, if you renovated it and used it for some other use. It's not your your personal home, yes, then you would you would be eligible for tax credit. I say, it's, they're confusing all these little pieces, because there's the federal, the national register, the federal, and then there's the local things.
Sure.
Yeah, um, is the Heritage Commission working on, um, regulation, zoning regulations for either the village? Or the, uh, Enfield Center?
Well, the village, there's, you know, we don't, there isn't a a district yet, that that doesn't exist, so we don't have anything to say. That's what?
That's not a.
That's the historic.
I know, I know, no, I know.
That's National Register.
I I know, my question, are you are are you planning on?
I, yes, we talk about, yeah.
We we have talked to people in Enfield, uh, I mean, Enfield Center. It's a couple of years ago now, we've dropped that and focused on the three historic buildings. Because they needed help right away. Um, our intention is to get people who live in the village together and ask what they would like to see. And and it would be nice to have a a National Historic District also, like our main street is. But we wouldn't do it without the input of the people who live there and what they'd like to see.
Right, we we amongst ourselves have talked about guidelines. For for Enfield Center, we sort of got, you know, things for fences, or, you know, where people can put solar panels.
Yeah, I see, my understanding, we, the town adopted that's district.
The three buildings.
Three building districts, and Enfield Center, and I was wondering if you were working on regulations to regulate those buildings.
We have talked about it, but we haven't, it's not a agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, um, could you talk a little bit about? The difference between guidelines that the historical commission. Would recommend versus zoning ordinances, which usually are developed by the planning board. And do the guidelines have to come before the entire town for a vote? Or just within that district as it's established?
I think we talked about this around the table, starting with talking about having regulations. And, you know, have some teeth in it, and that wasn't popular. And I suggested that maybe we have a list of things that we prefer, because many builders or developers who come in. Uh, and it could just be the guy dividing his house into, for to have an apartment, they don't always. They wouldn't think twice about taking the Victorian doodads around the windows. And just covering the vinyl siding, and, uh, so I think. One thing we'd all talked about was there should be a list of things that would be suggested upgrades. For a historic home.
But are you asking more like a a regulatory question, you said, what whether these things. Like, what's the relationship between the guidelines and a zoning regulation, is that what you're?
I, yeah, um, basically because we have members of the public here.
Yeah.
And we've had this discussion a few years ago, and I just want to revisit it and get it on the record. And make sure that we are all on the same page.
All, all, um, guidelines are a list we have. That say, well, if you wanted to, you know, be in keeping with our historic district there. These are guidelines that that would be good, but if they were anything that was a regulation and had any type type of. Teeth in it, it has to go with our town to do, has to become part of ours.
Mm-hmm.
Does that answer the question?
Uh, I think it does.
To tell you the truth, I don't, you know, we've made, you know, this Enfield Center, you know, we've we've got, that exists, is the zoning overlay. And to tell you the truth, I don't know exactly what the process is for those guidelines. And how binding they are, and I know we we would just, you know, discuss whether, where you can put solar pan, where, there's million, a million different things. That you could do, but I have to tell you, I'm not, I haven't looked into it enough to really say to you, this is what. These mean, and then if you don't do it, what happens to you, or, you know, that's what, I think it's sort of your question is about that, I don't know.
Also, if you have, are receiving grant money for upgrading a building. As Mascoma Valley Preservation is with the, uh, excuse me, the Grafton Center Meeting House. Uh, there is some state money and some federal money administered by the state. There are regulations there that will. That will not allow us to put solar panels on the roof, because that's not historic. And they don't really wanna see solar panels in the yard either, they want the historic building to look historic.
So.
If you've taken money from Uncle Sam, you may find more regulations.
So a a grant from the state or the feds would de facto override local regs?
Oh, I don't know about that.
You, that's what you just said.
Well, I did say that, but.
I mean, if if.
I'm not sure if the the answer's correct.
Okay, I mean, if 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 we have in our zoning regs, which I believe we do. That anyone can put solar panels on their roof, and I'm pretty sure that's in our regs. Um, and the owner of a house, wherever. Um, decides that he or she wants to put solar panels. Because that's what needs to be done. Um, and it happens to be within that historic district, which at this point is only. Three buildings, but we hope that would be expanded, does the, um, does the grant money? Or the grant regulation, or even the, uh, the guideline? Does that trump our local regulation?
Oh, but I'll let.
I'll ask. Preservation.
I mean, with the grant money, if the grant says you cannot do X, Y, and Z, and you say, well, I wanna do that, then you don't get the money.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, that's. Right, or you do, they come after you and charge you.
They take it back.
Take it back, probably put with interest.
And they'll do it ten years later and charge you a lot of interest.
Yeah, that's something that we would need to to really, in in, if we, you know, going forward, is to, and start to think about guidelines. Is to think about, you know, what what things are negotiable, not negotiable, and how those would be put into. You know, to the zone regulations, since that is an overlay, like I, that's a legal question, I don't know how. What what in a zoning overlay, I don't know how, you know, how that works, to tell you quite truthfully.
Okay.
So, but that's certainly something to explore. Uh, again, the question of of teeth and something, you know, if something doesn't do it. What would, then what happens, I mean, and that that that's a, that's an important issue, as I said, I think that, for instance, that's what happened with the dollar store. They sort of said they do something that they didn't, well, we don't have any.
Well, I mean, they they did technically, but we had, uh, you know, I mean, you know, developers like that. Will pull that kind of nonsense all the time, because they don't want windows.
Um. Just an example of something where, you know, if we make also very clear.
Yeah.
You know, you can say, well, it's not just that you have windows there, they have to look like this, you know, we set the, that's the advantage of sort of being clear about stuff.
Right. Um, so we've gone on for an hour, which is good, and I would like, I would like to ask. One more question, only because you included it as part of your presentation. And 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 you and you promised we would talk more about it, and that is, and that is Shed Street and Laramie Farms.
I put those in as things that, I I don't have anything to say about them now, I'm just saying, those are perhaps areas. Where we could collaborate, we we don't, we have nothing to say about that, though, those were just areas, as they say. Where we're coming in, where these two worlds may be coming into, you know, in into some sort of conflict. Um, and my very rudimentary understanding of Shed Street is that there's a request for proposal, and, you know. I've been told that the heritage will sort of be part of it, or, you know, what it looks like will be part of it, I'm just saying. Going forward, that kind of project is an opportunity for us to start at the very beginning.
Mm-hmm.
As it gets defined to say, this is what we want, or this is how it's going to be, or as as they come before you. With their projects, this is a time maybe for us to talk about it and help you articulate. As you talk to them, what what it is that your vision for the the buildings are, so I don't have a, we haven't, we don't have a plan for that.
Okay. Um, so anything else that you wanna talk about? Okay, so.
Yeah, if there are any other questions, we're happy.
I don't see any.
Trying to answer.
Dan Kylie, any other questions?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, um, so thank you Heritage Commissioners for coming in and for your informative presentation. And discussion, and I think as a board, we will look forward to working with you going forward.
I'm sorry, yeah, but look forward to, you know, where to find us.
And you know where to find us.
Yes, exactly, I mean, I, we sort of feel like we're in these two, like, you know, separate worlds, that we should be helping each other out.
Yes, and yes, and, you know, I don't need to emphasize. Or can't emphasize any stronger, please be aware of our minutes. And our agendas, um.
And Linda is the secret weapon.
But Linda's the secret weapon, and, you know, knowing the way. Our board functions and communications with other boards and other parts of function, function areas in town. Um. You need to take the responsibility and come to us, we will try to reach out to you, but I don't wanna guarantee it.
You did, I broke it, you're weak.
That's true, that did happen.
It's been very agreeable, so.
Okay.
Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I say you know where to find us for questions and resources, and if I say it. Really useful if you want to have the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, some of their specialists come talk about. Things like building placement on lots and infill and stuff like that, if they're, they have really good programs and really good specialists. People can talk about that sort of thing.
Okay.
That will help you have a vocabulary to talk to a developer, you know.
Yeah.
Learn the, you know, learn the words, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, uh, no hearings, no conceptuals, no select board report, Rob, Land Use Administrator Report.
Let's quickly give you a quick update, five minutes. Yeah, we had a Z B A last night, we had three applications from two different applicants. Um, C B A granted for the first applicant, uh, variance for a repair to a retaining wall. On four A, forty-nine, we put, the answer was four A, uh, but they denied a variance for a addition of a deck. And they setback to the lake, seems to be a theme that they are very rigid about, uh, water quality. Obviously, for Mascoma Lake, it's very important and. Was it in the fifty feet setback?
Yeah, you're all done.
Yep, so, uh, then there was another variance application up on Jones Hill for a, uh. Like a barn, storage shed on a very small lot, uh, they did give the variance to that, that was, uh. Leaving in the in the side lot setback and setback to a wetland, not a, like a major wetland, it's just a wet area. And there was a pre-existing structure with a, with an existing slab, that they wanted to slightly expand by about a hundred and twenty square feet. So they did get that, um, we are still in the, uh, appeal period for the Z B A's. Uh, uh, Laramie Farms variance approvals, uh, that would timeout about the eighteenth of this month. And, uh, been fairly busy here, there's obviously major projects happening, Vinnie is. His third week now as our new building inspector, he seems to be settling in, and he's very busy with big projects, obviously Whitney Hall. Public Safety, he's going up for a cell tower inspection next week, uh, Dartmouth Sailing. Uh, there's a lot of stuff, we finished up major operations at Mascoma Lakeside Park, the LWCF Grant. Uh, if you guys have been down there, uh, seen it, it's beautiful, the plantings are incredible, uh, it's a lot of watering. Talked to Patty, who's in charge of that, Patty Freed, I think it's like four hours of watering, when it gets this hot every day. Uh, they're pumping from the lake to be able to keep all those new plantings alive, and there's multiple waterings a day, because it's so hot. Uh.
It looks nice.
It's beautiful, beautiful, uh. Highway guys are working on stuff, very busy sidewalks, things like that, um. It's very busy, just steady, steady, lots of stuff happening, a lot of paperwork flying around here, so.
Okay, any hearings for next meeting?
Yes, you're gonna have.
Wow.
Uh, at least a few of those, maybe three of them are voluntary mergers, so those will take no time at all.
Okay.
But you will be hearing, uh, site plan review for the brewery.
Awesome.
Good.
So I've been working with, uh, Brian Dignan, who's the owner of that building. And I'm excited about that, so, uh, that'll be two weeks from tonight. Any questions?
Good.
Yep, um, do you know to what level they're gonna rebuild Shaker Hill Road, are they gonna reclaim it?
I don't think they're reclaiming, I think they're just doing a, like a three-quarter inch. Yeah, really need. Yeah, because they've been doing a lot of cross pipes drainage work, a lot of cross pipes, yes.
Yeah, they're gonna throw a bunch of money into it, and it'll last for another five years.
Yeah, we call it, they, they're gonna make it black, as thin as sheet of hot tops, they can put on tops, about three-quarter inch overlay. Uh, but the drainage work is very encouraging to me, because there's been, as you guys know, if you've driven that road, especially in the winter. Way too much water in the road bed.
Mm-hmm.
And obviously in the winter, that turns to ice and it's dangerous. And it, you know, it's a section of the.
That's a big decision to put three-quarter inch versus, you know, redoing the whole road.
Million dollars a mile?
So it's just a cost thing.
Absolutely, and, you know, I've been involved in that same, as a selectman, it's kind of the same kind of decision we make there. You kind of have to basically make those tough decisions to say, you know, what's gonna be the best bang for our buck, what's gonna buy us some time? And we had a DOT guy come in and make the presentation to us at Plainfield. And, and he basically showed us the economics of it, and just to basically put some lipstick on the pit, like you said. Is, is the most cost economical way, I mean, they could, they could grind it, they could add new shim and, and do a whole rebuild. And it's still gonna crack, you know, I mean, it's, I mean, obviously, building it right is important, as you know, the highways were done right. And they last a lot longer, of course, they see way more traffic and all that, but from the economic standpoint, just, you just can't afford to do. A complete rebuild of every road, so they're just basically going around, they do a, a pavement quality survey. Where they look at every mile of state road, and then they go, this is, it's time to do this one. Boop, they'll go out, run it, and do it.
And that, that road is so bad that you, like, three-quarters inch is not gonna make it flat.
Do you know what I mean? I mean, well, so three-quarters inch is the minimum.
Yeah.
But, you know, where the wheel tracks have dipped or whatever, it'll, it'll certainly be deeper there, and, you know, it'll add up, but.
Okay, just curious, sorry.
Yeah, no, no problem.
There was times nineties when we had, it's a moment where we had the two executive counselors. And a DOT, local division, and. Uh, Florida Selectmen, state, uh, three or four state representatives, we were. And Phil was complaining, wow, about that road.
Sure.
Which one we got done.
The town was offered to take it.
Yeah, I sat in on.
Which we don't want.
When I went to the Lebanon City Council meeting last year for that patch thing. At the beginning of that meeting, they, they had spent a hundred grand, they had hired a professional firm to come in and do a big analysis of all their paved roads in Lebanon. And after a hundred thousand dollars, it was kind of funny, because it was basically like exactly what I just said, it's like. Yeah, you could go out and rebuild all these roads, but a policy of just doing the most, uh, you know. The poorest roads first, and just basically doing what you can to buy some more time and just keep going. One, Lebanon's had to bump up their budget a little bit, they're not putting down enough, you know, they, they don't have a lot of dirt roads. But it's only like four or five miles of dirt roads, it's just crazy, but they have a ton of paved roads. And so, they're not spending anywhere near what they should, they, I think they spent like three hundred thousand, and that's not all what Ed Field spends on our pavement. And so, the, the firm that they had hired said, you really should be spending about a billion dollars a year on pavement, so.
Okay, anything else? Alright, um, let's get on to discussion on zoning districts. Uh, I'd like to start by asking Tim to review his proposal from. Our previous meeting on Lake Shore, which. Got wiped off.
Well, I, I purposely removed that, because. I didn't want that, or I was fearing that someone would see that and think that that was something that we were. Serving in on and settling.
Mm-hmm.
What I wanted to convey was that, my opinion. To achieve what the. Think the, the, the spirit of the meeting we attended with the lakefront property. Is going to take a lot of time and. A lot of work to, to come up with a zoning ordinance that's gonna, it's gonna work for as many people as possible. I just don't see where we have the time between now and March of twenty-five. Yeah, to town meeting to, to get that done, so.
Well, Mike, I agree with you, my question is, how do we go about it? Do we bring a subset of that group back in and form a committee?
I think we do, I think we get, have the Laco Association people.
Yeah.
Um, pull in some expertise that they can get, they may even be able to fund some expertise. I don't know that, but certainly doesn't seem beyond the scope of possibilities, and then. Uh, whatever the town can do, all that effort as well, but it'd be a task force.
You might be able to get some help or representation from New Hampshire Lakes.
I'm sure we could.
I mean, I, I would think that they would be, I don't know, I mean, I would think that they would certainly be interested in.
Yeah.
Uh, a, a zone around, uh, large bodies of water, uh, with the intent of, uh, perhaps having. Uh, different rules and regulations to protect the water, I would think that they would, and they've got expertise.
Right, it's probably, it's probably possible, there's mild water, there's this hope there.
Yeah.
That we could adapt, or with qualifications to Winfield's Pacific.
Yep.
Type of thing, and they would probably know where to find those, the different, um, options. But, you know, like you're saying, it's, but everything else is the legislature, you just have to write, actually write, write the regulations.
Yeah.
And it's, and that's just not gonna happen between now and January.
Hold hearings and present them, and, and carry the water on all the, all of the stuff that comes up.
And you have really, you only have till January.
We really don't even, we have till December, really, because that's when we have to.
Right, the public hearing.
Have to have our public hearings, but that, that does not mean that we can't start working on it.
So, one of the things that I'm worried about is that, you know, we, last time we talked about how big this is, right? Not just lake, but all of the zoning, and we talked about revisiting and trying to get public input and support. And it's overwhelming in terms of the amount of work, well, we've got to pick a few things to start working on, and, um. I think that we need to have that discussion soon about, okay, what are the, what are the, what are the three top priorities? Maybe the lakes falls into that, maybe we start working on it now, getting New Hampshire Lakes involved in the associations. But we won't make it for March meeting, uh, obviously, but maybe twenty-six.
Yeah.
But I think we need to have that discussion.
There is, i- if ten things need to be done about lakes, maybe a couple of them are no brainers. And a couple of them could make it onto the.
Well, that's, you know, one of the things that we talked about is the, uh, select board meeting, they had a draft. Uh, resolution of, uh, septic, uh, pumping inspection. And that's something that they can do through the, um, the health board, uh, which, does that have to still go to a hearing?
I think they definitely have to have a hearing, but.
Yes.
They can, they can enact.
That, that's something that ninety-nine percent of the lake people going, yeah, what, we need to do that, yes, it's gonna cost each individual landowner money. But it's something that's really gonna happen, so.
Is there the manpower to get that done? Probably the inspectors?
Oh, you mean the, um.
It's a lot of inspectors.
Question. That's a topic.
Are we gonna mandate something that's just not gonna happen? I mean, is there?
Well, there, there's a number of companies that do pumping in inspections, right?
Senate has such a regulation.
Yes, we've attended their meetings, uh, and we've actually had the Senate Town Manager come up and meet with us. Their land use person came and met with Ed and I.
Yeah.
Uh, we sent Vinnie down just a week or two ago, when he first started here. They're doing like a follow-up, it's been about one year that they, since they implemented that reg. And so, we're seeing how it's going, obviously, you know, it's, it's a learning curve for them, but we.
I'm sure.
We fully intend to steal everything we can from them, if there's good ideas in there, and if there's bad ideas, we don't, we don't.
Right, right.
But, uh, you know, I think it sort of eases in with some kind of voluntary compliance. And then there's some kind of a way to start building in some, you know, mandatory compliance to, uh, follow through.
Well, unfortunately, um, there are gonna be some that resist.
Yeah.
And so it's gonna have teeth.
Absolutely.
And, uh, it's critical, uh, in terms of the water quality, so we've got to move forward on it, but. Um, you know, again, going back to the, the forest through the trees, we need to determine what are the top two or three things that we're gonna work on. And what's the number one, which I think is the housing, obviously, uh, that we, we hired resilience for. Right? We need to, we need to get that for the people.
Yeah.
For, uh, the town vote, if we can, on, on town meeting.
I, I, I think we'll be able to get something.
Yep.
Maybe not everything that.
Not everything but the.
But at least.
Yeah.
You know, at least the big step going forward.
Yeah.
And. Yeah.
Well, at the very least, we know, I, I think the board's pretty confident that we want to have a, a, a lakefront or waterfront district. And I think in the new, the new version of zoning ordinance, we can identify it by name. And just put the word reserve at the end of that.
Mm-hmm.
Just means it's, it's a topic that will come up in the future, and this is where the, that part of it will, will live in, in the ordinance.
Well, the, that would work if we were doing an entire zoning rewrite. And presenting an entire document to the voters. Uh, it doesn't look like we're gonna be doing that. Um, so what we have to.
What are you facing now?
What?
What are you facing that?
What am I?
Because I think we can't.
You think we can rewrite the whole thing, but.
Yeah, now, a lot of the sections, like in the R-one, R-three, R-five district. You just cut and paste out of the old ordinance and pop it in the new.
Although there, there are some easy, a couple of.
Yeah.
Which we've talked about.
Weeks, you could do there, but.
We could do, but we, but we, we, the, wh- what I'm thinking of is that we need hearings. In order to get public support and to tweak based on what the public's.
Yeah.
Wants, right? We think it's probably the right idea, but we've got to get their support or they won't vote for it.
So, I would like to see the, the structure of the ordinance, uh, rewritten. And it would have probably several sections, like this historic district we're talking about. Here, I could also historic, infield village historic overlay district reserved. You know, it's just another section that we don't have anything to bring to the voters now.
So you're talking about a new, a new structure, a new format?
A new. Format, clean things up.
That's a lot of work, too.
But, yeah, and it's, it's really not, because the topics are. The, the topics are what's gonna take the time.
Yeah, not the format.
Not the format, the, the topics like parking, we need to settle on that, the building height issue. Uh, and, but then, those are sort of things that apply to the entire, entire town. It's really, in my opinion, we need to be focusing on the village district, we want to create that, we need to do that now. And, and almost solely focus on that.
I agree.
So. Let's segue into the village district. Um, I think we learned from our public at our last meeting. That including certain sections, um, specifically the Maple and May Street. In the, um. The village, which also includes Route Four, was something that people were not gonna be happy with. And I've been giving some thought to that whole question. And wanted to throw out the idea of, we have. A village residential district and a village mixed youths. And I'm thinking something like that would allow us to designate certain sections of the overall. Village district that the consultants have proposed as residential. The way they are now, and they would stay that way. And the remainder would be mixed-use, commercial, residential, retail. Service businesses, what have you, how does that idea sit with anybody?
Is Baby Street and May Street currently in R-one?
Main Street, no, Main Street is in our, basically, commercial.
CB.
CD, CB.
Okay.
Commercial business, community business, minority business.
But May Street and May Street is not.
Yeah, the CB district goes up maybe to the post office.
Okay, okay.
On Maple, and that's it.
Okay.
And above, you know, north of that, well, you can look on the.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
It's R-one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So David, that's exactly what. I think we have now, and, and I, when resilience. Uh, when I act surprised at what they were suggesting the other day, because I had never. Heard that we, we were gonna depart from the fact that we've got a village that's mainly residential, but there, there are at least two areas. The Route Four corridor and in the Main Street section, where what you just said, the mixed-use commercial was gonna be encouraged. As they are now. And, and so, I, I agree with you, but I don't think we're really changing anything by, by doing that. What we're doing is not what resilience suggested.
I, I think there was a discussion at some point, and. If I remember correctly, we did not want to add a whole lot of zoning districts.
Yeah, we, we, yeah.
And I, you know, I, I think resilience reacted to that and kind of lumped everything together. And. We've heard from the public, and I think we have to back off on that, and we.
Well, or at the very minimum, we, we, we have not had a, um, community involvement yet for those sections, right? We haven't eaten like we did.
No, we, no, we.
We need to.
We, we have, we have not had that, but I, I think it would behoove us. Excuse me, to have a discussion that suggests, you know, where the boundary lines are. Because what's now our CB district and our Route Four district, we may want to tweak those. And I think we should get those, uh, defined in our heads before we take it out to the public.
So, what you're saying is that the, most of the suggestions slash changes from resilience would, would apply to. Uh, the commercial residential CB area that we currently have. And that the, uh, other areas that fall outside of that would be what they are today.
Um. Yeah, basically, I mean, we, you know, we've got to look at the final proposal from resilience. Final language, and there may be some things that they put in, like, okay, in R-three, you can have. Three plexes or four plexes.
Or the generational in R-five.
Yeah, you know, we, you know, those are things that are pretty easy to put in and hopefully not very controversial.
Yeah.
Not.
Yeah.
Um, so that, that's kind of the way that I would like us to proceed, um, at our last meeting. I did commit to giving resilience, um, our changes on the map that they had drawn. And I backed off on that because I felt that we've got some discussion. Before we have them, you know, sit down and start modifying maps.
Well, since you raised that, I just sent you an email with three maps. Can, can you get those up? Let's go back to my computer machine. Oh, wait a minute. No way to, it's just three PDFs.
Does this machine have its own email address?
It does not. This one sort of sits out.
Like one of.
Quarantined, so to speak.
First time we've been here, right?
Yeah, we've been here a lot.
A lot, it just doesn't make any sense for you, for it's Rob, you're running back and forth.
You can't sign into your email account, as if you were signing.
Because I'm signed in, in my office right now and there, they won't let me sign in here, and say, whoa, you're already signed in.
How about if you sign out there and then you could call and stuff up?
Just go get those.
Okay, either way.
I'm, I'm only a step ahead of you, if it only one step, that's. Then I do have some maps that you can talk about.
That's great. Um, it was my intention to talk about and. I don't have any firm, um. Ideas on where the. Boundaries between village residential and village mixed use should be. So I am.
But we want to create as much. Opportunity, right, as we can.
For both residential and commercial.
Right?
Yeah.
And, and, and to increase the density where it makes sense.
Right.
Wherever that heck that is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I don't think we want to short ourselves, uh, but again, we gotta get public support, so.
Right. Um, I just want to say for the benefit of the public, we will take comments after the discussion like we did last time. Just make, just make things a lot smoother.
While he's doing that, you want to hit the notes, get that out of the way?
Yeah, let's do the minutes. Good suggestion. Anybody have any questions or comments, changes on the minutes of June twenty six?
So I don't have any changes, but I have questions, but I'll reserve, we'll talk about them later. There, you know, no sense in going now.
Okay. Left later meaning later in this meeting or have some.
Some other time.
Okay.
Questions on decisions that we made that I just want to talk about.
Okay.
But I think the notes were accurate, I didn't find any issues. So. I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Second motion made, seconded, uh, because we're online, we'll have to do it as a roll call. Um, Linda?
Aye.
I vote aye. Brad?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Let's see, Bill?
Aye.
Um, Dan?
Abstain.
Yeah. Dan abstains, all right?
Didn't even look at me.
Uh, we, we only elevated one person because, uh, we can't replace a select one. So there we are, uh, minutes are accepted as written. All right, Tim, talk about your maps.
Time block on that. All right, just move on. So, um, we've already talked about roughly the infield village. Correspondent is being out. We have it up there. Not sure how in depth we got about that discussion, but we have talked about that. There's no change to that. Um. The late district, which we're not gonna. Move forward on. Um. Some of the drawings I had the other day are reflected here. Which kind of made the R one district a little small. But. For this time, we're just gonna make all that, we're just gonna leave all that R one, right to the large edge. And so forth, same thing over here. Uh, so just disregard that. Anyway, uh. Assuming we wanted to stick with this, then we'll see what the next map shows. Um. Um. This then. Was, um, let's go to the next vaccine. Route four, commercial district. And this was my first attempt to try and define that using the property lines as boundaries. So you start here, four, across the Kanan Town Line. Uh, follow the village. Boundary, but basically you, you're incorporating all the properties that, that front on Route four. Some in the back. Um, right up to about where, uh, just past where the border tank is and where. Flaramie's, um. Drive away. So. It probably you won that.
Yes.
Uh, I think that's the.
The rural break.
Yeah. Some cemetery property and various pieces that fall here. And there's only a couple places where. Cutting across lot lines might make sense instead of making this whole, that's the Seymour Farm. And. Um, but really only one, I think maybe one spot will be. So, I mean, we can adjust these. Obviously, but that's what I suggested is the Route four corridor. And then. We can take the. Route four zoning ordinance, it's already in our zoning ordinance, the district that's there. And simplify that. Uh, considerably. Think a lot of it. Has led to a lot of confusion. Doesn't really accomplish what they're hoping it would, et cetera. But basically, and I've also suggested that this is an overlay district on the village. So what that means is that all of the village regulations terms of would apply to that district. Except where they're modified in the. Or overlay district, so anything about residential. Settings. If you wanted to leave your, your property in the residential state. Those are the regulations you go to. If you want to. Turn your residential property on Route four into a commercial entity. And. Two four regulations would, would address those, those issues. The village did, or the, the, um. Very purple here, which is highlighted on the previous map, but. You know, I was suggesting that's the CB or community, uh, community business or what, what, uh, Main Street district. So basically, all the properties that butt on Main Street that butt up to the backside of the four district. All the way down to just across the bridge. Here in South Main. Uh, that we treat that a little differently than this commercial this year. This year we have, we have used car lots, we have equipment dealers, we have, uh, the kinds of businesses probably don't want down here. So. I don't know for sure, but I gotta think these regulations may read a little different. Promoting that.
They do.
Yeah, so. That's what my thoughts were to this point.
So your purple area, I mean, that, that, that's. Part of it is Main Street residential area.
Yeah, and a lot of these residences, uh, have, uh, are multifamily homes. Some of them are old Victorians cut up into several different apartments. There's a one or two single family home to loan. The new, uh, six unit place that Calders built is right there.
But, but, well, how would that be different than? You aren't ignoring the rest of Main Street, are you?
Yeah, uh, well, uh, my initial thought was, yes, I would. I would say the rest of the Main Street is part of the village district, strictly residential bound, so we don't want to promote businesses down. Or maybe we do, but.
Um, if you had a lawyer or chiropractor, they could have an office in one of those.
No, I think in the village. Most any district, we've got things called home base business, it's a whole section.
Mm-hmm.
So it would cover that sort of. We're, we're not talking about the, a retail establishment here. I guess, maybe we are, but. Talk about. So.
I, I guess you've got to look at the existing development pattern in the purple area. And. I just don't really see the possibility of used car lot.
I don't either.
Um, so I, I, I'm, I'm trying to think of why. That might be different or why that might require a separate district. From. The, the part that's outlined in green. Um, you know, you could certainly say things like, uh, a used car lot requires conditional use. Uh, stuff like that, but.
You could, and I, and I don't know the best way to approach this, but I think the point is. The kinds of businesses that, that we promote and allow, you're not gonna do that here.
Right.
You're talking about the brewery, the, the restaurant, the. Small retail establishment and the lower, lower level of the part of the building.
Yeah, but if. I think you should be thinking about is what do you want there versus what somebody else might. Put there because it's allowed. If it's allowed, there's always the opportunity for someone to do it. So if you approach it as what type of businesses and, um, activity would you, was, does the town want to see there? I mean, does the town want to see a more gas stations, parking lots in the pur- in that purple area?
I think we want to see residential, high density residential. And retail. Establishments.
Sure.
But, but not.
Of course it would.
Retail and.
No, what else? Right, because it was on paper, it says it is allowed.
Right.
There was no guarantee somebody won't say, oh, okay.
But I don't think that we want commercial operations.
Right, right, so. That's, that's, that's why you separate.
Right, you, why you separate them.
Yeah.
I think it makes, I, I don't agree with following the lot lines. There. They've appeared randomly, not because of cause of the land. Um, and I think it makes more sense, the, the purpose of community business was. To define where there could be community business. And they wouldn't want to be so far back. Off the road. So I, I guess I'm not understanding what the green can do and can't do, because it goes out Route four. It, I, I don't know.
Well, uh, I mean, this is the large lot that. Looks like La Croix, La Croix owns. And, and, uh, housing development proposals, any portion proposals here?
Well, I, I couldn't, before I got here, I think there was some talk about a market basket.
Yeah, supermarket factor. Uh, that's a long time, long time ago. And I forget where they access, I think it was. It's a lot here that you could access back there. Um. Town Wells, uh, Boyos properties here, these, these are already commercial properties. SAU office, got commercial properties all the way to the town line here. You know, they're already kind of in there, and so if, um, a warehouse. Was proposed for back there, and was. That may be a good spot for a warehouse.
And there is some residential in that green area.
Oh, yeah, for sure, definitely. Little longer in four here, and if someone wanted to take one of those houses and. Tear it down and make a. Brand new something, commercial, our Route four zone, the Route four district. Had envisioned mixed use in that, in that area. Certainly on the eastern side. Uh, where you had residential was by right on the second floor. But commercial on the first floor. Or residential was by right on the first floor, back like six hundred feet from the floor. But we also did experiment with some forum stuff in there, you've seen that in there. And I would say that's been. As Meredith pointed out earlier, the only real example of that. Doing anything to fenestra.
One building on the Family Dollar. And it really is just fenestration on the outside, not on the inside.
Yeah, so. Then the village itself, the village district, again, would incorporate the entire area, show purple green. That was in the orange. Um. But that's what we talked about, the infield development issue or possibilities. You know, being able to subdivide a lot. Into. Whatever size lot makes sense, as long as the house had the right setbacks. Limitation of another amount of renewable surfaces, you know, things like that will self-wind and a lot of what can be built. Any slots are cut up in smaller. Allowing, uh, any home in here to, to turn into an apartment structure. Uh, some big homes that, several of them that. See right now that clearly the owners are having trouble to maintain. Maybe the best way for them to. Best money in those is if they have two, three or four apartments that are in. I don't even think you would need an ADU provision in this section. Just.
Because it wouldn't meet the qualifications.
Well, um.
You have to have it by state law.
Well, I, I, I know you'd have to have it, you would have to have it written into the section here because you can already do it. But there's nothing preventing you from. Adding an apartment into the, on your home or whatever, other than the fact that we want to make sure that, that, that all they, they were talking about, the. Character of the neighborhood. And the frontage. Uh, going down the road and say, well, it's gonna be twenty feet, but conditional use says that. If every other house on the property is, is ten feet, then. Okay, then your house should probably be tens, consistent. Can have lots of, and, and that's what's gonna take a lot of time to go through. And, and this alone. Uh, even if we just took the, the group four district, left it alone, didn't even touch it this year, or the CB district. Uh, the village part of this is gonna take a lot of time to walk through all of those little details. So to be satisfied of the master plan, we would talk about. Promoting housing, where we have water and sewer. Higher density housing, how are we gonna do that so that it looks nice at the end of the day? We don't cause harm to, to, to neighbors, but all lower property values. Yeah. Back on, a couple more, sorry, I was. Yeah, so there, I, I didn't try to draw them all on the same map, but basically. Did talk about the village being Powell Road to. Jager Hill. And, uh, coming down. So, and then, but it's so much, living stone lodge. Skipping over here to Lake Street Stevens and all those guys and. I don't include the Larry thing because they're already there. May, May, well, all of that's in the village. So you're right, the regulations are primarily about housing here. And essentially said, no current uses of the home base business thing. And then your two four overlay shows you where you can have partial businesses. But that's not a departure really from what we already have. To find it in the. I don't know where to go from there.
Let me ask you a question, can you go back to the next slide?
Yeah.
Why would you not want to extend the purple area across Route four? Where you've got things like, uh, a post office, which certainly seems to fit in the. Context of other businesses and service residential. Uh, maybe the school. Maybe the, um. Our community building. And maybe on up to, uh, Baltic with. Vicky's or Guzado's as it's now called. Why, why would we not want to do that?
Well, if you, if you walk up. Maple Street from Route four. You got Q and House on your right, which is a. Multi-unit apartment building with. Ann's Place parked around the corner.
Right.
Now. It's a halfway house or something like that. On your left, you've got Jake's.
Jake's.
You've got a substation. You've got the post office. And then there's a multi-unit apartment building on the right across the post office. All of that is apparently new construction, except for Hewitt. She's on the National Bridge, so it's a place of great.
Uh, and that's approved, that was originally approved as nine suites, mixed use, it could have been a lawyer's office or something like that.
It was a real estate office.
Yep, yep, and now it's pretty much exclusively residential.
Yeah. It just felt like why bisect the Route four corridor with a different zoning district when everything in there kind of feels like everything else in the Route four? Whereas if you go down Main Street, you're in a row of large homes, used to originally build these homes. And then, and then several multifamily homes that are really old. It's not a lot of new, there, there's the uh, the bank, police station, with the halls getting facelifted, obviously. And, I don't know, I just felt like it felt more to me like part of Route four than it did in Main Street.
Well, what about expanding it to, I don't know, to accomplish feeling with me, but just lower it down towards Bell Street, Stevens, I think Stevens Street or something, Shed Street, sort of that, heading towards the Pan Circle area. It's a lot of residential there on the.
Well, but it's, but we didn't wanna promote restaurants and uh, retailer establishment, some Stevens.
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, that's the, that's the other thing too, is what do we, what do we want in the village district?
Restaurant?
Yeah.
Uh, house.
Brewery?
A brewery.
We, we, some retail.
Some retail, and you had a number of places come and go.
Some, there's the farm girl finds. She's got a farm girl finds.
Yeah.
On Main Street.
Yep. Yeah, what, what did we say? We, we would allow on the Shed Street properties, those two lots?
Um, eight acre.
I mean, we, we, didn't we say more than just housing?
Think you can do some other things, but I think we could.
I think we were certainly thinking about housing there.
Oh, I, I know we're thinking about housing, but I, my point is that it might be a, a multi-use area. Like, you know.
Really want that.
What?
What did the regs, what do we, what do we adopt in the zoning? But is that section?
Can, can you call it up on your computer, somebody?
Yeah, let me get my computer turned back on. I think I probably said something.
I don't believe we put any restriction on it, David. That's why it was set up as it is, it's just two lots.
That's kind of what I thought is you could do, oh, you know, do, do a lot of things. And when the select board chose a developer, um, that would sort of be the uh, the guiding factors, you know, does this look like it fits and will work for the town?
Could be, it could be senior housing, it could be whatever, it could be mixed use housing.
Yeah, what do you mean by mixed use housing?
Mixed use, you could have some, a small retail establishment on say a first floor and housing above it.
Why would anybody wanna do that on Shed Street? You know, why not? I understand it's not the point, but I, I, I think what I'm, what I'm getting at is you're in a residential district of town. There's nothing else around, there's anything other than residences. And you got whole occupations, private yard sales, accessory uses, um, I don't see anything in there about mixed use. Oh, we got whole.
Not much though.
Yeah.
So I mean, if we, we own that lot, we had actually looked at that site as a possible uh, public safety location. And I think it was agreed by most people, that it just wasn't a good use of that lot to put fire trucks and police cars down there, because it is a, it's a residential neighbor.
I'd say it, it, it uh, it calls within what the planning board is generally agreed we're trying to do is promote housing for that lot to be housed.
But I don't think we wanted to restrict it, so if somebody wanted to put in, you know, sixteen units, uh, housing units and a coffee shop right next to the rail trail.
Mm-hmm.
If they, if a developer wanted to do that, we didn't wanna prevent them from doing.
Exactly.
I think we weren't really in the language here.
What's that?
I said, I don't think the language is really good for that right here.
No, it's not.
I don't see.
Same. Whole occupation, so you got your lawyer's office and someone's running a little phone business up.
Yeah.
Only saying, that's natural. I'm saying in a coffee shop, that means people are gonna drive over there over to the coffee shop in the middle of the residential district. And we want that coffee shop downtown.
Yeah, for sure.
We're on Route four. Uh, the main fire station is gonna become available if our apartment moves out. There's another building, just like Shed Street, where we say any sort of residential thing you wanna propose there, you wanna hear about it. But don't, don't propose a, a, an Irving Fuel Yard there.
Or an auto body paint shop.
No, tho- those are not appropriate, but it being right next to the rail trail, why would a bicycle rental shop not be appropriate?
All right.
I think, I think, the point is, you could say in the future ordinance, conditional use permit, where you guys get to sort of look at and say, is this site and this use appropriate here, right?
Yeah.
Some things like Linda just said, probably aren't appropriate. I think that's the way to go with it, I mean, I think there's.
So conditional use really gives you a lot of flexibility.
It does.
Yeah, I like that.
It's a great class, so.
And obviously the neighborhood gets to weigh in, because their C U P is gonna be a butter's notices, and the neighborhood comes in and like, we would love a coffee shop there.
I mean, if someone like.
But if they're like.
In and out. Low impact commercial activity. And then in the P U D O, P U D O, U D, you sort of bet out what's gonna be low impact versus excessive. Too much impact. Well, um, you know, something along those lines.
Right, with the, I mean, just, just saying the fire station might be a landscaping business because you've got the building there for the equipment already. Might be.
But that's not, that's not what we wanna propose or promote there. We wanna promote the building to be taken down and converted to housing.
For sure. I agree.
But we just, we just heard an hour of saying, why do you wanna tear all the buildings down?
Because that was ugly.
That was, no, I'm sorry.
In the eye of the beholder.
You know. You can't have it both ways.
I think it's also a potential temptation.
I mean, clearly that's.
I don't think the fire station is.
You, you'd want it toward town and, and.
Yeah.
Resident, residents put up of some sort.
I mean, let, let, let's look at the ambulance building.
Same thing.
Tear it down, that's, that's got historic.
No, give it back to the state. Let the state have it, they want it so badly.
Yeah, no, where did, where did I put Evo Street? And I don't think it's on, in my purple area. Maybe it should have been, no, it's not, so. Yeah, maybe that should be.
Both sides or just one?
Also, I mean, we, we gotta decide at some point, so, good question.
Well, at least we can decide that.
Well, I think, I think this is a great start.
Yeah, it is. Uh, do, do you guys wanna keep going for another fifteen or so?
Well, we need to do co- public comments.
That's true too. Okay, let's say it's time for public comments. Um, Sharon, you had your hand up first.
Well, I love what you did, okay? I love this second proposal, it's much better than the idea of taking Bay and Naples to a commercial district, I mean, to a village district back to the Canaan Town Line. That's crazy. Uh, that was the original proposal that the consultants had. And so, but I have just a couple of points to make, but I'm gonna do a better job if I just stand at this map and show you. One of the things I want you to consider, um, I live on Maple Street, I'm Sharon Lofe, for those of you who may not know me, um. Okay, if you look at this, look at the, look at the places that have to access Route four. And part of what I'm worried about along here is if we have large, if we have zoning that allows large buildings, say a large apartment building, and depending on how large it is, how many apartments it is, my interest is right here at this intersection with Maple and Mace Street. You have about sixty-four houses up in this section right here, I counted them one day, but all the way back to the Canaan Town Line. Our only egress, unless we wanna go a back way to Hanover, over, I think it's a dirt road, our only egress and ingress to Route four is right here. If you make this more of a commercial district, then is it residential now where the post office is? What is it?
It's commercial.
Okay, it's commercial, but I think it's only commercial about two, I think you had said, um, Ross, two hundred and fifty feet.
Three fifty.
Three fifty feet back. So I suggest keep the three fifty feet back. Don't open it up more, because if there are huge buildings in there, however many apartments they have, however many cars they have, we can't get to out to Route four now. And people talk about, oh, well, there's gonna be a roundabout. Well, I've been hearing that talk going on for a long time. And in reality, I know with the state that it takes at least a couple of years for anything like that to become a project, and then it takes another year or four to be built. So I'm just like, you're, from a safety feature, if a fire truck has to get through there or something happens up here, we have to get out. And there's a lot of cars from a commercial business apartments here, residential trying to get out, we are stuck. We have no place else to go. So that I would suggest is a bad plan for those of us who live up in that area. It, it's not so bad, I think is this, what room?
It's quite six room.
Oh, where is? Where is?
Flanders.
Aren't Flanders?
Right there.
Yeah, I don't know if, you know, if that happens to Flanders Street as much here. But if this Laramie Farms is built, we're already gonna have a mess trying to get through Route four to get out to Lebanon. Please do not plan for something.
Where would you draw the line?
I would just, I don't know exactly where I would draw the line, but a lot closer. So somebody can't, if the post office uh, is ever sold, somebody can't put a big building there, or if Hewitt House something is sold, somebody can't put a big building there. You know, the buildings that are there now are okay. Um, who is it? Pellerin has an apartment building right here, that is about six apartments, I think. Four maybe? If he wanted to, he could be, put a big honkin' building there. There again, this is rife. If you open this up, this is rife for problems for sixty-four of us.
So, but by saying that, you restrict the opportunity for, for high density housing?
You also restrict the opportunity for me to get into and out of my house safely every single day, multiple trips a day, me and sixty-four other families who have to get to work, who have to get to school, we're already cut off from Enfield, just trying to get, just to try to get through this intersection is a nightmare. And the fact, no offense to Ed, but the fact that Ed even put this sign here, you can't even see traffic coming from this way. The town sign that he put, he blocked visibility.
Yep.
Unless you sit in a big high car. You know, it's a mess, and I live there, I go through there every single day, I've lived there for twenty-eight years. So I know you want what you want density.
Well, I'm not worried about just you, I'm worried that is the same true, right, for every other street on Route four? Right, in both directions? Not, to take your point.
Yeah.
Right, if you expand that, then what are we even doing?
What you have to look at, okay, so this is Anderson Hill?
Yes.
Is it? Anderson Hill might have the same problem, but I don't know if there's as many units up in Anderson Hill as there are up in here. I don't know with Anderson Hill, can any other egress be built? You know, to give them something someplace else. I don't think that there's any other egress that can be built off of here. So you have to, I can only tell you my experience on this road.
No, to, I, I understand what you're saying, but I am sure other residents in other parts of, of uh, that Route four corridor are gonna say the exact same thing.
Yeah, you know, to talk to them, and they have to talk to you.
Right, so I'm just worried that we're trying to increase the, the density, obviously, uh, for, for, uh, because we're in such a state. I don't know.
Right, I mean, Route four, Route four intersection.
Um, yeah.
Most, most, I mean, that's just the fact of life of Route four. Any road that intersects Route four is an issue. Either because of the alignment, the sightlines, um, or the traffic.
But is it an issue for residential areas to access that road to get in and out every single day? I don't know, I mean, that's something for you guys, that's your job to look at. Um, truthfully, when I come into Enfield, what I look at is what's all along here? If I thought of development in Enfield, you know, a lot of these people probably don't wanna sell their properties to developers, but these parcels along here, there's great sight visibility and for most of that. And um, there aren't housing developments that are trying to get out to Route four. There aren't housing developments on either side of that, I mean, this looks like a little bit of something. Um, so I'm just saying, you've got density here, and please don't make it worse to be able to get out there. Um, and I just, hold on one second, and then just I've done, and I appreciate uh, what you're saying. What I, the other thing that I really caution you about is, if, look at the master plan. The master plan talks about what people want, the vision for downtown Enfield. What they really talked about was mixed use, yes, but they talked about businesses that people want to hang out at and go to and sit at, you know, restaurants and shops, you know, where you could purchase things and, and walkable. And that's a lovely vision, and I really liked that. But if you allow too many apartments there, you have very small space, you're gonna squeeze out any commercial possibility you have. So therefore, what are your apartments? Look at Shed Street, you know, look at um, where the ambulance building is. Don't think about businesses in those areas, think about businesses downtown. Think about apartments in those areas, because those are already residential areas. Um, so I think, uh, and my other question is for, this is my last one. If, are you changing this from residential one in this plan ten?
Well, the, so residential one, where there's town water and sewer, really is residential point two five. So you can have a, a home on a quarter acre lot on just about all of May and Maple Street.
Right, are you changing it to the, um, what the consultants suggested as far as no frontage and um, you know, houses that can be up to five stories high?
No, I don't think so, I don't think so, I don't know where they got that idea, we, we.
And we haven't even discussed, there's the latest um, draft from the consultants yet, so, I mean, I got pages of mockups, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think what we were talking about, and, and you. Yeah, no, I, I, I think what we were talking about, and you guys weigh in here if I'm mischaracterizing, is, is uh trying to think of Maple Street. To go up a little further, there's, there's some large fields to the right, I think Earl Ford owns them.
Oh. There's water up there.
Well, yeah, they're wet, so there's lots of natural hindrances to not being able to build there.
Right.
Uh, but there are some, some sections that are in upland soils, and, and so what could be, what could be put there? A duplex, a triplex, single-family home, just whatever people might want to build there. Uh, I, I think is, is generally the idea. You've got a large lot in the, that Bill Warren owns behind you.
It's wetland.
Which is mostly wetland, so lots of natural hindrances again to what could be put there.
There is water all through here.
Yeah.
And um, what is going to happen probably with Laramie Farms? When they develop all of that water, there's, it's all wetland coming down that hill, and it all feeds. Our property is this one right here. This whole corridor is a, a big wetland, and the wetland goes over to this side of Maple Street. And it comes off of Moose Mountain where Laramie Farms is going to be.
Right, and so what I would personally like to see is that zoning regulations allow a property owner to develop what part of their land is developed. And not be bound by an arbitrary square footage or acreage. In other words, if, if you've got enough room, you've got town water and sewer, and you've got enough room on a lot that's mostly wet, but you can build a two-unit apartment building with a driveway and a couple accessory uses and whatnot, and all your hookups, and you're not touching the wetland. Then by all means, go ahead and do that. Setbacks to the property owners to your, all around you, you, you can, you can meet those, fine. And then we've talked about having a, a limitation on permeable, impermeable surfaces. You don't put too much asphalt down and water running off to your neighbors. It's those kind of constraints, I think, will, will naturally limit what can be built in most of those, those lots up there. There are other areas in town. I go down South Main Street, Great Lane, it's a big field there. Lot of potential for development there, if the owner wanted to do that, but he may never want to do that.
And there again, I think there was something that was said about the character. We were talking about the character. I really think you guys have to think about, you're gonna think about spots where a building could go, an apartment building? Apartment building, unless it's just two levels, is gonna be out of the character of all of the houses, Great Lane. If you look at all of those houses, they're two level high. They have nice lawns. They're not gonna wanna look at a big apartment though, they smack dab in the middle of the only field that they have.
That's probably why they wouldn't sell the land, you know, I.
I've said enough, but I thank you for listening to me, and I thank you for considering, and I just implore you, please, don't lock us in from a safety perspective and just getting in and out of our property like they say today. So, and, and for the other sixty-four residents who couldn't be here, thank you.
And you, Sealy.
I just wanted to add that um, about the, we were talking about septic systems, that the state just the governor just signed a bill into regarding septic systems on lakes, where it had to do with installing the property and uh people are bound to have to.
Get it inspected.
Yeah.
If you sell your property on the lake, you have to get it inspected.
I think this is a little more, more developed. People feel, they're allowing people to do their own septic system and then have it inspected. You have to read it. You went back and forth, and it's just assigned by the government.
Yep, yep.
So I just.
At the transfer of the property, right, if you're selling, that's what triggers it, I think? Other states have that, that's how they catch.
Yeah, that's there already, right?
I, I don't think so, not New Hampshire.
Well, anyway, check it out, because I was reading it had different options, you know. I was surprised about letting the other property on the, build the wrong.
I, I don't, I can't believe that that could be allowed.
It's one, it's one four oh seven, it's not, it's still one four.
Fourteen oh seven?
It's um, it was in the citizen.
I believe there was, they brought up an issue about if you own your own house. You can do your own electric, you can do your own plumbing. Why can't you do your own septic system? I own an excavator. I think that's what came into play with that.
As long as you follow the state regs and gets inspected.
Correct, you just can't go put one in, it's, it's gotta meet all the requirements.
Yeah. That would make sense. And you get it inspected, and either it passes or it doesn't pass, just like if you had a commercial contract. Any other comments?
Right, Brown fifty-one, Mace Street. I spend a lot of time outside. Last summer, up in Canaan, in Hanover, I believe, at least fifteen trucks a day of logs came out. Then another twelve logs of every other day came out of checks. Okay, all this wear and tear on our road, we have a doggy daycare which is zoning in Canaan that comes up, and there's at least forty people with dogs, give or take, uh, I notice going by every day. And I just heard today that Canaan issued two permits to build houses on some of that log land up there. I only heard this through a rumor. So out of that nine hundred acres supposedly they logged last year, how many houses are, are they gonna allow to go up that road? And when are we gonna get an updated road because of all the extra traffic?
I, I, I can't answer your question because it's Canaan.
Right, but the point is.
I, I get the point.
Is in that road, so what Canaan does is appropriate to consider.
And Buffet just said about the number of cars coming out, okay, automatically now, here's an extra four cars when these two houses are built, we're guessing.
And if, if a, if a large development goes in there, Canaan would be obligated to call it a development of regional impact, in which case the town of Enfield becomes a party. We get to weigh in, we get to say, hey, this is gonna cause A, B, and C, and D problems coming down into our territory. And we're gonna need some impact fees to to do something to mitigate it, or we're just gonna object to it entirely, or whatever.
We got one bridge at the end of Mace Street, that sucker goes out, we're all screwed.
Yeah.
Okay, I think Anderson at the end of Brown Street, we make a quick dash through the woods to get to Anderson, to get out of there if we had to, right? But anyway, but thank you, it's just a thought.
Okay.
Just one, one thing, I talked to a zoning guy at the state, and he was telling me in two thousand and two, there was this big study about Route Four traffic flow, and it had all these recommendations. And he goes, well, I don't know how many of those got implemented, but they're supposed to be center-left turn links. And I'm like, oh, well, isn't that interesting? There's no center-left turn links anywhere, you know? And I was just saying, you know, if they build Laramie Farms and don't do something, we're gonna be stacked up back to the interstate trying to get through town. So um, you know, I just think it's interesting that there was this whole study, and nothing apparently came from it, you know? So here we are now with even tighter issues because it wasn't under us back in the day. So I just think we need to look at both what the now situation is and in the future. So if Canaan, for instance, does put a giant, something, you know, that we think about that now, and we put in Laramie Farms, we think about, how is traffic gonna move? Can Route Four be widened? You know, I've heard all kinds of discussion that there's not room to widen.
I mean, we, you know, we, we do as a town try to look ahead and look at the consequences and try to anticipate the unintended ones. But in relation to Route Four, we have nothing to do with that, because the state is gonna do what the state wants to do. And whether they do it this year or next year, or at the end of the current ten-year plan, or in the ten-year plan for fifty years out, we have no idea, and it's, it's kinda out of our, out of our hands.
Wow, but if we put four hundred apartments in and there's no way to turn left, and that seems like a big deal.
Yeah, but, but unfortunately, the state has already given them an access permit from a previous developer.
Who?
Who what?
Who's the then?
The, the Iron, Iron Man, or whatever it was. Did it expire?
Yes, and, and it was on to Maple Street, it wasn't on the Route Four.
And it was a different project, there was no.
Uh, different owners, different project.
Rob, can you, can you fill us in on those status of their?
So they're, I think they're working with the state to try to get a permit. That's, that was the big stumbling block, as we know with the Volksburg. That state was, was gonna require attorney there, there was no of at all for.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't know why I thought Laramie already had worked out their access.
Because.
The original Di Benedetto one had.
Say that again, Dan.
The original Di Benedetto one had gotten an access permit to come down the Water Tower Road.
I think we give permission for four hundred units if we don't even know how traffic's gonna be in and out of it.
Well, they're permission for a height restriction.
David, we really can't talk about the project.
Yeah, okay, you're right, thank you.
No application on the, on the table.
Okay, we got sidetracked.
Thank you.
Rob, you're gonna kill us all?
I always do a little bit.
All right, David.
David, Maple Street, um, we spent a lot of money putting sewer down to Route Four with the promise or anticipation that, probably not promised, that, that there'd be a lot of business to go. Next, um, business investment that showed on, on, along the strip, uh, for, for strip. Yeah, between Main Street, um, chicks and set up, uh, and uh, um, the, the, uh, school administrative building. There's been animal along that corridor. And I would urge you to try and figure out how to get where it gets if you're gonna go on that corridor before you go elsewhere, aren't you, that's.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Any other business that board members wish to discuss?
Well, uh, yes, if we're, if we're gonna move ahead with this, we need a schedule by which we have to have everything drafted. And I think it's gonna be a lot sooner than what you've been talking about, expanding our project yet. Yes. We're gonna have some listening sessions. Obviously, obviously have to have the legal hearings at the tail end of all this. Uh, can we back up from those? I think you're gonna find, we've only got about maybe a couple of months yet.
That's about right.
So I'm really disappointed that there is this provision. Started on the planning boards about two and a half years ago. We're gonna rewrite the zoning ordinance, starting then. And we're, we're not anywhere near, so we think. So if we're gonna get anything done, we gotta have a focus meeting that meets outside this meeting before conference. Saturday jam session or an evening, several evenings, we have got to be devoted, so we're not gonna make it.
I'd like, uh, I think it was Brett, you had sort of said, to come up with sort of your top five, ten, whatever you want it to be.
Three, you said two or three.
I'm expanding it for this year. But David and I are gonna be going to a meeting a week or two to start learning about COP two, which is another round of HOP grants that are gonna be available for municipalities with a priority or preference given to COP one recipients.
Housing focused?
Yes.
Yes.
And
Doesn't help us.
This one, they don't want us to apply for less than a hundred thousand. That's what the housing people have told us.
The problem is that if we hire a consultant, and if it's housing focused, we really can't do all the other stuff that we wanna do, right, because there's a lot to be done. And even if we were to hire a, a company like, like Brazilians to help us write and take a more active role in, in writing it, it still requires the people around this table and the public to. I mean, it's huge, and it just takes, it just takes a phenomenal amount of time and effort, even with a big consultant.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'd like, frankly, and it's not Brazilians' fault, I don't wanna say that.
It was a bad.
But I just don't I'm not happy with what we've done with them, the work product. I mean, I know we haven't got the final work product, but I have a feeling what, what it's gonna look like, and at the end of the day, it's really not it's more designed to take a, 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 a well-functioning, solid ordinance and tweak it to enable housing. It's not designed to rewrite a zoning law.
Absolutely, because the money at the state is all housing focused, because there's a crisis in the state.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, if, if we wanted to spend money, for example, uh, on the lake shore, that really doesn't count, because we're not increasing the housing, right?
Well, that, that grant, I mean, it's a housing opportunity grant.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, that, that's the prime, that is the sole function of that grant.
I'm just getting to the realization of what that means.
It's, I'm not sure that it would help us.
Right, well, it's like we said earlier, but the, the district, the Heritage District, if you apply for a grant that says you can't do X, Y, and Z, you don't get the money.
Right, right, right.
So this grant was housing.
Yeah, we need a grant that says, okay, to rewrite your zoning. Because the zoning needs a lot of, a lot of, I mean, the format needs to be changed, to Tim's point, there there's many, many different uh parts of the zoning that need to be rewritten, we all agree, that, that need to be changed, we all agree, we talk about it all the time. But we really haven't done any of that work, because it falls outside of the HOP grant. I'm not sure another HOP grant's gonna help us.
I guess it depends on how far the HOP grant can be stretched. And you know, when we did the phase one HOP grant, we did talk about problems with our zoning ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
And the need to clarify. And we tried to bring in the fact that, you know, you've got housing, but you need supporting infrastructure, you need businesses, you need transportation. And I think that's how we got to the point where we said, we can do a little bit more than just housing, because they're all interrelated. And, you know, it, it just, a lot of it depends on how far the grantee, grantors are willing to let us stretch it.
Yeah, but the consultant's gonna do what, look at what the grant purpose is. Yeah, but a consultant's going to do it, look at what the grant purpose is. And they're not going to step too far outside those bounds because their job is on the line, their reputation. And.
I I would disagree because if we can get those things written into the grant, into the application, and then emphasize to our consultant, whether it is resilience or Playsets from New Zealand or anybody else, that this is the scope of what we are doing, then I I I think we're not going to have the problem that we have now.
Asking them, right? I think you're honest with them and say, look, if this is what we need.
Yeah.
How far can we stretch it? But we really need somebody that can take a section of our zoning, rewrite it and present it to us one paragraph at a time.
Yeah.
One section at a time and so that we can make some forward progress. We don't feel like, I won't speak for you, we were, I don't feel like that we've made a tremendous amount of of progress. I think we've learned a lot.
Yeah.
We've learned a lot, but we we were, it was like the master plan, we're floundering a little bit, right? We're we're in the floundering stage and it's just, it's a frustrating time. But the project is is so huge and certainly bigger than I thought. Yeah, I I mean, I I like Tim's idea, maybe we get a little group together over the next two weeks between now and the next meeting to come up with top three, top five, whatever it is of the. I mean, I think what we need to do right now is start trying to hit base hits, not trying to hit home run.
Yeah.
And that's what we need because the home run is really, and you just said it yourself. Well, at least for twenty.
It's like Village District, i- i- if we could do nothing but just define the boundaries. And it's, even if we had to stick with a quarter acre zoning in there, I I mean, I I'm not going to die on that mound, that's hard. You know, it's 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 okay, it's it's there and then we can come back to it and fill it in, fill it in later. I was really scared that the Historic Commission, pardon me, wanted to put an overlay district forward in the in downtown.
No, they didn't.
Well, I know they did, but I was worried that that's what their plan was because you know, that's controversial enough alone. It it kind of is the one thing you'd want to do at a town meeting and nothing else, just put that forward and have that discussion. Not a whole new zoning.
So to to Rob's, to Rob's point and your point, a few people get together, talk about what are the two, three, four things. And then whatever number one is, I think is the village, and you say, okay, what are the sub areas that you want to concentrate on, right? We we definitely want to increase the density where it makes sense. We need to draw the line and get public support.
Yeah.
Right? And maybe that's, maybe that's it for for this next meeting.
David.
Standing back and observing this, we've been around the circle with consultants and planning and and grants for a long time. And I afraid that a good, at least a good bit of the upcoming report, it's going to end up on the shelf with a lot of others. And what needs to be done, and I don't have the know how you how you're going to get to it, is because it's probably going to fall into a few of these people's hands. To look at the highest priorities for changes. And make could make those changes, write those changes, bring them back for approval by the committee.
Well, you you do that, and then you've got to get public support.
Well, then you'll have to. Which you can do that quickly so you can get public support.
I I I think to to your point, I agree with most of what you said. My only thing that I would add on to the sit that the consultant work sitting on the shelf is that we learned a tremendous amount. And these two guys that that were, we talked to, we may not like everything they said, but they were experts. And you ask them a question, they knew the answer, right? You know, even the the learning about the conditional stuff that that.
Yeah, there's five or six things in their stuff that I would absolutely support.
So other jobs, like like our five generational thing, be done.
Duplex in the R five.
Mm-hmm. Done.
Duplex.
So.
Maybe quadplex.
Who knows? But those are the things with like drawing the line, I mean, drawing the line is going to be big. Anyways, I digress.
Okay. Anything else? Because it's about.
I just got one thing, and it'll be quick. Believe me, it'll be quick. I'd like to make a suggestion. We had a good thing with the Lakeside people. If if the Village District is what we're looking at, let's, can we get together and meeting with the people in the Village District so we can get input now? As to where we're heading and where they want to be and what they want to see.
But before we do that, we've got to have something to present to them.
Right.
We didn't have anything at Lakeside, really.
We actually kind of got burnt presenting stuff to the Village District people. They're like, what is this? You know, like, no, no, no.
What do we do? Go and say, what do you guys want?
That's what we did with the Lake people. We did, we can't do nothing. Although, you know, that kind of backfired too, because people were like, well, what do you want? You know, like, what are you asking for? Remember Dane Reagan stood up and he's like, this is what you're thinking about doing? Like, no, 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 no.
Right.
You tell us what you want. I I I think a Lake District is a little more self-contained and some of the needs and solutions are are much more obvious than looking at the, at a Village District. And I would be very hesitant to get together a pe- a gr- a a group of people from the village and say to them, what do you want? Because it's just going to be a free-for-all. I think the way to go about it is to present them with one alternative or possibly two alternatives and say.
Or or even more.
You know, pick it apart, tell us what's good about this, tell us what you don't like about it. Just as the people who were here two weeks ago
Did.
Did with our consultant's proposal that Maple and May would be part of the whole Route Four District. So that that's my feeling on it.
May- maybe we even get simple and say, this is what we have today, column one.
Yeah.
Column two, these are, these are the areas that we think don't work.
Right.
Give us some options.
Some options.
And then the third column is, we could do this, what do you think? Maybe you do that.
Maybe one of the options is we do absolutely nothing, and maybe they all say, yes, do that.
That's what I'm afraid of, right? What I'm afraid of is that, and it's their right, right? They'll come back and say, no change.
Yeah.
Which which is the worst thing that could happen because we obviously know there are changes that need that.
Yeah.
Yeah. For sure.
So we should maybe include that as part of the discussion of the three priorities? Or say that.
Going to write all this, you know, down.
No, just.
Come up with this list.
Whitney's doing, no.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to.
You're the secretary.
I know, so.
Jenny or Snead has been in front of Brad.
I'm more interested that I think he's leaving. I was getting ready to pack up.
Would you like me to set something up in the next week or so to get a few of us in the room?
Yeah.
We got to be careful, we can't add more than four in the room, then it's a meeting.
Three.
So if you, yeah, well, seven voting members, so if you have three, it's not a quorum.
Right.
Four is a quorum.
So it's going to be three people.
Three people.
Are you going to be there?
Yeah, I don't count, I'm not a member.
Is that kind of alternates?
Yes.
So, well, no, they, an alternate would, unless he's elevated to a member, wouldn't count.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't push that. We actually had to warn this meeting as a joint meeting because they had a quorum of their members here. Heritage did. So it was, you know.
But Heritage doesn't warn meetings anyway.
It should.
Oh, you do?
Ninety-one, absolutely, everything the public does.
Okay, so Rob, will you try to?
Do a couple of sessions and we could.
I'm willing to. Or into.
I think David has to be there too. He's thinking about what you think your top, well, in three, four things are.
Buddy.
Voluntold.
Voluntled.
I've been voluntold, yeah. All right. Brad whispered a motion in my ear, do I hear a second? All right, we got to do a roll call, all in favor, in favor of adjourning, Dan.
Yes.
Linda.
Aye.
Brad.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Kurt. Dan, Dan.
Yes.
Bill.
That's Kurt in front of them, I don't know.
Yeah, that's that's what threw me. And. So we are adjourned at twelve after nine.